Alrighty, good morning. Thank y'all for being here for the Texas General Land Office's public hearing on the Community Development Block Grants for Mitigation Funds on Monday, December 2nd, 2019. It is now 10:03 a.m. We'll go ahead and get started. Please make sure that you're signed in on the sign-in sheet located at the signing table right over there. At this time, I'd like to ask, before we begin today's meeting, you place all cellphones and other communication devices in silent or off mode. This public hearing is intended to seek input on the development of the State of Texas's Action Plan for $4 billion in Community Development Block Grants for mitigation funds allocated for the State of Texas for mitigation programs, projects, and planning in areas affected by Hurricane Harvey, as well as the 2015 and 2016 floods. Starting right after my call to order, the Deputy Director of the Community Development and Revitalization Division will give a presentation on the mitigation funding. Once she concludes, we will transition to our public input from our attendees. If you wish to provide public input during today's public hearing, please complete a comment card at the registration table. It looks like this. You're welcome to complete a card now, or if you think of something that you'd like to say later on, please make sure to fill one out and have our staff members come and grab the card here, as well as in the audience. If there's any questions or comments about the GLO's disaster recovery programs that are currently operating, please make sure to email CDR@recovery.texas spelled out dot G O V, or give us a call at 1-844-893-8937. In addition, you're welcome to come visit with us after the hearing concludes. So, for the public comment, each individual speaker has up to three minutes to provide their input. A delegation of five or more individuals can appoint one person to present their views for up to five minutes. For those who'd like to provide public comment, please make sure to set forward to the X marked here on this floor in front of the projector. Our host Keith with the Aransas County Navigation District has a microphone for you to speak into. Please be aware that this public hearing is being recorded. Any persons choosing to speak in this public hearing are consenting to online publication of their comments. Once we get through all the comment cards and there are no longer any individuals present who'd like to provide input, we will conclude this public hearing. If it does not last until our projected 2:00 p.m. close, we will conclude prior to 2:00 p.m. And welcome any further input again at our email, CDR@recovery.texas.gov. Due to the format of this meeting, it is a public hearing intended to garner input from our attendees about the State of Texas Action Plan for Mitigation Funds. We will not be able to hold any discussion or answer any questions due to the format of this hearing. Again, the intention is to garner input to incorporate into the action plan. Therefore, please make sure that all input is provided in the form of a statement. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce our Deputy Director for CDR, Heather Legro.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Like Jonah said, I'm Heather. This is considered a public hearing, so we're going to be listening to you. We are looking for your thoughts, your ideas related to the action plan itself. If you'll remember, we came down, oh, probably about two months ago now, and visited with you about what do you need from us? What would you like this action plan to look like? We tried to compile everyone's ideas into this document, and it is our hope that you can kind of see us reflecting some of those suggestions that you had made to us in the plan. Unfortunately, because it is a public hearing, we don't plan to interact with you directly. If you have questions of us, we will be here afterwards, and we can talk about the particulars of your specific issues, your specific questions. The only thing that I will do is if there seems to be a clarification necessary, I'll pop back up and talk a little bit through something that maybe I didn't cover as well that you may need some additional clarification on, because there's no reason for y'all to be thinking something's bad if it isn't. So let me clear that up for you if possible. So like Jonah said, we're with the land office. Y'all have seen all of these pictures, and I'm going to jump through some of these. The federal register itself was published on August the 30th. That federal register was nearly two years in the making. The Congress actually appropriated those funds to us pretty quickly after Harvey, but then it took a little while for HUD to figure out exactly what mitigation meant. And there were some discussions in D.C. amongst many of the agencies, because we were stepping on each other's toes, it seemed. So the allocation to the State of Texas is $4.2 billion. There are 140 counties eligible for this, because it is eligible for 2015, 2016, and 2017, or Hurricane Harvey disasters. What that means is, is some counties, as the Jasper County judge told me when we were visiting with him not too long ago, have the trifecta of disasters, and they're going to be eligible for every single program that we're putting out under this action plan. So if you were impacted in 15, 16, and 17, there is a possibility that you will submit three applications for three different programs for mitigation efforts. The action plan itself is due to HUD on February the 3rd. So if you are a 2015, and some of you may actually be affected by 2015, I know that Rosio County is. If you were impacted by 15, or 16, or Harvey, then you're going to be eligible for these funds. There's a handout at the back. If you didn't grab that handout at the back, better than the maps even, at the back of that handout, there's a list of each county and which particular events you qualified for. To qualify, that means that you had a disaster declaration through FEMA for that event. And I don't intend to read these slides to you, but I do want to read this one in particular. This one, the land office had nothing to do with. This is how HUD is defining disaster, I'm sorry, defining mitigation as opposed to disaster recovery. So mitigation per HUD are those activities that increase resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage to, and loss of property, and suffering in hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters. This is extremely critical in how the action plan was developed. HUD did not allow us to look at the damage that you sustained. This is not a backward-looking program. All of these dollars have to consider a future risk associated with these funds. So whereas all of you who are applying currently for your first tranche of the Harvey mitigation funds, I'm sorry, the Harvey disaster funds, you are having to have that direct tieback. You're showing exactly what Harvey did to you to be eligible for these funds. This one is a forward look. You're looking forward at risk, in particular, risk related to hurricanes and/or flooding Some additional rules that HUD has placed on the funds. Fifty percent of that $4.2 billion has to be spent in counties that HUD, counties and zip codes, that HUD has defined as most impacted. This is a calculation that HUD did. This is not a number that we had anything to do with. It's based on housing damage related to Hurricane Harvey 2016 or 2015 events. Again, in your handouts, but this map, the darker shaded orange areas, will receive 50 percent of this money. Fifty percent of this money can also be spent outside of those most impacted areas. It doesn't have to be, though. So we can spend 50 percent or more in the dark orange, or up to 50 percent in the lighter orange colored areas. Fifty percent of the money, the $4.2 billion, must be spent within the first six years, with 100 percent of the allocation being spent in 12 years. 12 years sounds like a whole lot of time, but the expectation is that these projects are going to be larger-scale projects that are likely to involve very detailed environmental reviews, where it's likely to involve the Corps of Engineering and specific permits under the core project methodology. And those of you who have worked in that environment know that those things can take some time. It's likely that you will also be doing projects that will result in large-scale acquisition, and acquisition can be difficult to get through, be it a voluntary or an involuntary process. Fifty percent of the money has to be spent on projects that qualify as low-to-moderate income. So in most cases, these dollars will be spent on infrastructure or buyout-type projects. So what you'll be looking for is service areas that in the majority are benefiting low-to-moderate income people. And I talked about this a little bit already. HUD didn't want us looking at the damage that we had sustained during those three events. They wanted us to look at how this risk is going to go forward for the State of Texas. To do that, we looked at the State Hazard Mitigation Plan, and we looked for risks associated with what are called the FEMA lifelines. As it concerns the use of funds, we first identified the programs and the program criteria that were going to be necessary to solve those risks that we identified. From there, we determined amounts of money to populate those dollars and developed a method of distribution. Within the entire document, you will see us, because HUD pretty much mandated it, that we are promoting local and regional long-term planning. We're promoting coordination and leveraging of funds. So again, looking for larger-scale projects that are partnerships, that are a big bang for the buck, is what HUD keeps saying in the presentations that they do when they're talking about these funds. We do want to see a promotion for natural infrastructure where it makes sense, and we want to ensure construction standards. We're looking at anything that you described to us as a project, to ensure that there is long-term operation and maintenance available for these funds, for these programs. If you have a project, we can build it for you, but we cannot maintain it for you. So in perpetuity, we're looking for how is this project going to be maintained? And then we're looking to assure that construction costs are reasonable. This is not as strict as a FEMA benefit-cost analysis, but there is a connotation of benefit-cost being considered as we're looking at projects. So this is a quick timeline that identifies for you the plan forward. We are starting that 45-day public comment period, and it will end early January. Within that next two weeks, every single comment that we receive from you, be it verbally here, or something that you mail in to us or send to an email address, will be actually put into the action plan itself with a written response. So while I told you that today we won't be able to respond to all of your feedback that you give us, in our document, you will see that response back to you. And then it goes to HUD for submission. On February 3rd or before, we're going to submit this action plan for HUD approval, and HUD has told us that they need 60 days to approve that. So that means about April 1st, we should have approval of the action plan. HUD told us that we had to do four total public hearings, two before and two after. I think we're up to nine now. Texas is a huge state. We didn't want to make everybody come to Austin. We wanted to come to you and spread these out so that they would be more convenient for you. And we are taking public comment online, so I know some of you might be a little bit shy about coming up and offering public comment. You can definitely go online and do that there. Another thing that HUD has told us that they want to see with these program dollars, after the action plan is approved, is a citizen advisory committee, a committee of folks who were impacted by the event, who know what's going on locally, who can help us out with progress throughout the grant. Once the action plan is approved, we plan on bringing together this advisory committee and/or committees, because again, Texas is a big state, to start talking about our progress and using that committee to help us move the programs forward. Like I mentioned, there is no tieback requirement on these funds. If you apply as an eligible applicant under 2015, you do not have to define how that particular project that you are applying for was caused by or an issue during 2015. You do have to identify how it relates to hurricanes and/or flooding mitigation. Of course, it has to be CDBG eligible, and it has to meet a national objective, 50 percent of the money on the LMI national objective. So under the infrastructure side, you're going to see us encouraging you to do regional investments. That encouragement is by way of the competition programs having higher minimum grant amounts than you've ever seen before. For 2015 and 2016, the minimum grant that you can apply for is $3 million. That is $3 million per project. For Harvey, that amount is $5 million. So that is definitely encouraging you to think bigger in the projects that you're looking for. The projects that you're looking for can be things like upgrading water, sewer, solid waste. Communications is a big one that we keep hearing again and again as an issue. Energy, transportation, health and medical, and other public infrastructure. And then multi-use infrastructure is also possible. Green and natural mitigation infrastructure is always encouraged. On the housing side of things, we didn't think that HUD was initially going to allow us to do housing with these funds. They had initially told us that we could use these funds for the mitigation aspect of a house. So we could pay for the elevation, we could pay for the storm shutters, and we could pay for the windstorm protections, but we couldn't actually pay for the construction of the home. We pushed back really hard, and the commissioner followed up on it as well, and HUD changed that. So now, we're eligible to put together a program that will do funding of houses that include mitigation measures, so we can build the house and elevate it now. We have set aside money particularly for the homeowner assistance program in this region. Y'all are oversubscribed in that program. So the money that we're putting from mitigation will allow us to go deeper into that oversubscription waitlist that we've already established. Buyouts are considered a housing activity by HUD, and we will allow for buyouts in our programs. We are not setting aside money particularly for buyouts, however, based on the response that we had to the buyout program that we did with the first $5 billion. Floodproofing of any sort is likely to be eligible, and then hardening of single and multifamily units is also going to be an eligible use. Economic development is technically eligible, but if you read all of those details, this is not really economic development. This is more hardening of the commercial areas and facilities to ensure that your businesses are mitigated from a risk perspective. This is not money to businesses generally. Planning and public services are eligible uses. Planning is going to be a really big one with these funds. We definitely want to see you doing planning activities that are considering that mitigation and that risk, that are definitely going to be a part of Texas as a whole, I guess I should say. You're going to see opportunities to update your local mitigation plans, your local codes, your local zoning, those types of things. Your GIS data can be updated. Those are definitely things that are going to be considered here. Public service is a little bit harder to do with these funds, because it's tough to do a public service that's going to solve a future risk. Public service is a soft service of sorts. So think about things like education and outreach related to buying flood insurance, or how to harden your home. Those types of things could potentially be eligible. We still cannot do buildings for the general conduct of government, no city halls, no courthouses, no emergency operations centers. You could perhaps make those facilities more resilient and harden them, but that would still be something we'd have to look at case by case. No forced mortgage payoffs. This has not really been a problem in Texas, but we have seen it in some other states, where the mortgage company actually says that they will not allow the homeowner to rebuild from the CDBG funds. They want those funds to retire the mortgage instead. So HUD closed that loophole, and that's not allowable with these funds. This one doesn't make a lot of sense to us, and we've pushed back pretty hard on this one, and we may ultimately ask for a waiver from HUD. But we cannot enlarge a dam or a levy beyond its original footprint. If you're thinking mitigation, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. It's definitely not a logical restriction. And there is no assistance to private utilities. HUD has identified a new project type. It is a covered project. It is a $100 million project with at least $50 million coming from CDBG. Realistically, it's just a project with the big price tag on it, and it has to go into the action plan. So if you're applying for $100 million, which you could in some of these programs, it may be a bit of a delay to get you to your contract, because we have to amend the details and the specifics of your individual project into an action plan document. And there is some consideration for benefit-cost analysis as it relates to that project that's a little more stringent. Again, we're looking at, from a needs assessment perspective, risk associated with hurricanes, tropical storms, and depressions, and severe coastal and riverine flooding. So those are the other perils that would have been potentially eligible, but we have focused these dollars on just the top two. In looking at how to allocate the funds, one of the criteria that we looked at is a composite disaster index. Historically, exposure to six event types was considered. They're ranked and weighted by the exposure of that disaster type, and it identified areas of Texas that are most likely to be impacted by future disasters. And then, as you can see, the shading there indicates how that looks. And I believe this is in your handout as well. If it's not, it's definitely in the action plan. Okay, so these are the programs. These are the different programs that are going to be eligible for participation in. You'll see that we have two programs specifically set aside for 15 and 16. Those are both competitions. Then we've got a Harvey competition. We're going to allocate funds to the regional councils of governments and ask them to do a method of distribution. We are supplementing the HMGP program with Texas Department of Emergency Management, Division now of Emergency Management. The Coastal Resiliency Program is a program that has been funded, or will be funded, that keys into the state's GLO master plan, the Coastal Master Plan that many of you participated in. The Housing Oversubscription Supplemental. I don't know why we didn't just call that the Homeowner Assistance Program Number Two, but that's what we called it. This is for the Homeowner Assistance Program waitlist and oversubscription. We're doing a resilient home program. This is a program that will look at alternative ways to harden and strengthen homes. So this program is going to go deeper into the Homeowner Assistance Program, but we're going to build more resilient homes that are a little bit different than a conventional house. Hazard mitigation plans, this is going to be for all three events, opportunities for communities to apply to update your HMGP programs and plans. The Resilient Communities Program is that program that I talked about earlier to help with updates to zoning and building codes and ordinances and that type of stuff, if that's something that you're interested in. And then also, the planning dollars are going to be available for all three. For 2015, HUD identified about $50 million, $46 million, as the amount of money the State of Texas was getting for our need or our risk associated with 2015. So we did the very same. This is a $46 million program. It is same as before, 50 percent going to HUD-identified most impacted areas. Maximum award amount is $10 million, minimum three. Eligible applicants are going to be cities and counties, excluding Houston and San Marcos, because they both got direct allocations from HUD. Indian tribes, the COGS, in the 2015 eligible areas. And again, we're looking at infrastructure for hazard mitigation to include a housing activity buyout and acquisition. Very, very similar, 2016, the amount is $147 million. All things are exactly the same, other than the dollar amount. Hurricane Harvey's competition. This one's definitely a little different. First off, this is a $2 billion competition. 50/50 split, HUD most impacted, $100 million maximum, and a $5 million minimum for these projects. We've opened up the eligible applicant somewhat to be cities and counties, Indian tribes, COGS, state agencies, service districts, ports and river authorities. And again, focusing on hazard mitigation through infrastructure, buyouts, and acquisition. Okay, so the first particular program I'm going to tell you about is the Regional Mitigation Program. This is what we call the COGmod money. This is the money that's being allocated to the COGS for local distribution. It is going to be eligible for infrastructure and buyout activities pertaining to mitigation, as always. The minimum award amount is going to be $3 million, and it is 50/50 HUD most impacted. And you will see the 50% LMI come out in this method of distribution your COGS will be creating. This is how the money splits out. These are the COGS that were eligible for Hurricane Harvey. We split it 80% to the most impacted HUD areas, 20% to the state-impacted areas, within each of those allocations. These allocations were based on that mitigation risk factor that I talked about earlier, that disaster index, a social vulnerability index, a taxable per capita value, and population. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is a plus-up to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program that T-DAM runs. So T-DAM received about $890 million for HMGP, conventional HMGP, the one that y'all have all applied to. They received- They received close to $2 billion in applications. So we're going to put another $170 million in that program and just go deeper into that list of selected projects that they have put together at T-DAM. It is for Hurricane Harvey and we are looking at opportunities to choose projects that of course are CDBG eligible. And if you, looking at what T-DAM has considered, there's acquisition demolition, elevation, community individual safe rooms, retrofitting of facilities, structural hazard control, emergency generators and code enforcement. The Coastal Resiliency Program is based off that Coastal Master Plan that the GLO put together. It's a $100 million program and it's going to look at projects that were identified in that master plan and fund those as direct allocations. I think I've talked to you about this one quite a bit. This is $400 million going to the Homeowner Assistance Program that will plus up the areas that have oversubscriptions related to that Homeowner Assistance Program. And this is the Resilient Home Program. This is the Innovative Housing. Again, this is a plus up to the Homeowner Assistance Program, so there's about $500 million going into that Homeowner Assistance Program to deal with the oversubscription rates that we already have. Hazard mitigation plans, there's $30 million and that is, this one is for all three, 15, 16 and Harvey eligible counties to apply for. This is to update your hazard mitigation plans locally. To be eligible for a lot of the FEMA funding, you have to have a current and up-to-date hazard mitigation plan. So this would help you to do that using the federal dollars. Resilient Communities, this one is related to codes, zoning, ordinances, all of those types of things that you put into place locally to make the construction more hardy and more resistant to risk. This is a maximum of $300,000 per community and you can apply for up to $100 million total in the program. There's $214 million that's been allocated for regional and state planning activities and everything eligible under planning will be allowed from these funds. So here's a really quick cheat sheet that kind of explains who's eligible for which of those programs and that's also in your handout. And with that, my job is done and Jonah is back up and your job begins.
So we will now transition to our portion of public comment where we take public input from our attendees. Again, please make sure to fill out a public comment card here and make sure that it gets to one of our staff members who can bring it to me up here in case you have any input. To start with, we will have Aransas County Judge Burke Mills. Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I understand that I have three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Well, I've got about 12 pages here, so I'm going to highlight it. I do have copies to give to you, okay? We're here to talk about the GLO receiving 4.2 billion dollars from HUD and its main purpose, the focus is on planning for flooding and flood control in the future. As required by the Federal Registry this year, at least 50% of these funds must be in support of the benefit of LMI persons and all programs will have an LMI priority. In our opinion, this plan policy will show. But as identified, Aransas County is one of the most heavily impacted counties. We are one of 23 impacted counties, one of 140 of these funds. And the term used was most impacted. Notice required that 50% of the application must be addressed and identified risk within these areas, up to 50% may be addressed and identified risk within the most impacted areas. The amount was allocated was 2.1 billion, over 2.1 billion dollars or 49, 91%. However, the GLO plan took 50% of that and designated for statewide competition and only 500,000 of the 2.1 billion was shown as distributed to the COGS in most impacted areas. The most impact COG, which we're a member of, got 76.9 million per million, which is of the 500 million. Our fundamental question is why ground zero of this event only being allocated 76.9 million, which is to be shared with 43 other governmental entities in our COG? The state action plan allocates 214 million for state administration. This is over two and a half times the amount allocated for the entire coastal bend area and that was ground zero for Harvey. Our, just for Aransas County, we are looking at $62 million for projects that are needed to fully fund direct storm impacts and another 40 to 50 million dollars for resiliency projects. Again, Aransas County was one of the 23 highly impacted counties. From the perspective of ground zero, we agree with HUD that more funding is needed than is planned by GLO. There certainly is help money competing for the funds, but in our opinion, it causes delays and unnecessary increases in the cost of the frontline governments like Aransas County. These increased costs would be for items like engineering, technical, legal guidance, management and administration, much subtle in the ground construction. In our opinion, delaying and causing a local repair station to spend far more than the projects that really cost, we need help now. We've already waited two and a half years. The last thing we need to do is continue waiting for funding and critical projects and endless competitive processes for more staff time and more delays. Critical projects, recovery projects in Aransas County like Little Bay Restoration, Cove Harbor, Bulkhead and our Fireby Optic Loop Networks, to name just a few, on the balance of the state inaction and endless delays. Why doesn't the plan take a direct approach, allocate the funding to the local repair station and help us move the projects forward? Let's skip over some of this. It's ours for you and your plan, trying to spread out the funding while this is commendable. This approach will not be effective in solving the recovery problems the money was provided to help us correct in the first place. From the perspective of ground zero, why don't you fund local plans and priorities first and then allocate based on documented meetings? Once this is achieved, spreading out the remaining funds would be fine. In our opinion, spreading the dollars to resolve political issues instead of storm issues, it's not. The delays caused by this process will increase costs, is key priorities and damage our recovery efforts. Again, two and a half years is long enough. Why can't these dollars assist us? We, get through all the three here quickly. All these pages, I've come up with just one thing that I need to say. Aransas County was ground zero for Harvey. If the history, if any indicator, we'll be ground zero again in the near future, Dr. Bill. We need your help in the affair. We need the GLO to hear us and hold through. With your support, we can prepare projects within the next three or four months that can help us for the future of Texas coast. It will not take years, so please don't forget us about our request and prepare for the final state action plan. We can help us if you concede, in our obvious perspective, no more costly delays, let's go on together and make future. The Texas, something that the Texas can be proud of.
Proud. Thank you. All right. Evan? Thank you, Judge, for your public comments. Up next, we have the Aransas County Navigation Chairman, Mr. Malcolm Nacal. Thank you for hosting us, sir.
Well, first I want to thank you for coming and holding these public meetings. I want to echo everything that Judge Mills had to say. We of the Navigation District are fully supportive of these efforts and I think we cannot overstate their importance. We have some additional concerns, however. One being that as a navigation district, the Bulkheads, Breakwaters and such, which are the first line of defense, fall within our purview and we want to make sure that special districts such as the Aransas County Navigation District qualify. At this time, our Bulkheads, some of them are in severe need of repair. And quite frankly, practically they cease to exist, particularly in Cove Harbor, which is a low-mod designated area. We have breakwaters which need to be expanded and also need to be repaired. All the good things that are done, the rebuilding of the inland structures, which is so very important. If we have another storm and we don't have adequate bulketing and we don't have adequate breakwater, homes are going to flood and be destroyed. Businesses are going to flood and be destroyed. So we need to make sure that Aransas County is adequately protected and that the funds are made available to us. I would hope that, and I recognize, and I'm not saying anything negative about Houston and Galveston and the big boys up there, that those of us who live in the smaller coastal areas will get sufficient funding and not be forgotten because the citizens who live down here, they need the protection. And the Navigation District, along with the county, the cities, are fully committed into providing that protection when and if the funding is made available. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, Nuances County Judge Barbara Canalis. Gotcha, she stepped outside. Up next, we have our Nuances County Judge Barbara Canalis. Apologies for interrupting your phone call.
I'm sorry.
Apologies for interrupting your phone call.
Oh, that's all right. I was just Commissioner Jeffy, not just joking. Always take your Commissioner's phone calls as accounting, Judge. Well, I wanted to say good morning and apologize, I'm a little under the weather, but on this beautiful day here in Aransas, I wanted to bring greetings from Nuances County, wanted to thank Judge Mills, just had him precise, there he is, and say that this is the second hearing that I'm able to participate on behalf of Nuances County and really just came to reiterate our regional perspective that we in Nuances County share here with Commissioner Modest, Commissioner Vaughn in the back. We really came to declare once more our regional interest in partnering. We think that the dollars that are available are good dollars, are strong dollars, but we see an alignment in our region. And even though I did step outside to take that call, I was fascinated by the concept of what we could do together if we were to put a regional breakwater concept or coastal resiliency plan together. And I'd like to urge our partners in Aransas, San Francisco and Nuances to work together in order to build this package. I think that it would benefit the coast, I know it would benefit in particular our three counties, and I think that together we are clearly could put together an incredibly strong program or portfolio, if you will, for the GLO to consider. I have been a little unclear on some of the what's in and what's out and so I do want to just reiterate how much I appreciate the questions that we have being answered so quickly and through Simone A. and some of the contacts we've had in our office for our grants department. We are working together to understand who's the best. We have done a little bit more due diligence in the refinement of our projects and I know Scott Ross is here through Coastal Parks and we are very fortunate to have our Coastal Resiliency Plan, how the project is shown, Betty, that we will be submitted. This has to do with Pastry Channel. Having said that, there is a tremendous disadvantage that some of our regional partners have. Nuances County, for instance, is already in the process of updating their hazard mitigation plan and will be complete by February 1. However, when you really look to see how some of your dollars are being allotted, you're basically saying, hey, come apply for these dollars, update your plan. Well, I want to share with you that I'm not in this situation, but I have tremendous empathy for people who don't have the plans already. That's a backwards thinking in my part. I mean, why would you want to spend money for a plan that you already? We need to be working on projects that the plans have already identified. We do not need, I mean, obviously if you don't have a plan, it would be important to do so, but again, these dollars are really meant to make us resilient now. So I want to encourage our regional partners to get your plans up and going before this April 1 or maybe it's now going to be May 2020 appropriation. This is very, very critical and I think it almost sends a strange message that you should wait to get your money to do your study. No, do your study now, get your reimbursement in, do not wait and if you need to partner with us regionally, we're going to do that with you. I'm also mindful that I just saw Danny Alho here with the board and to the extent that we can partner with what I call non-traditional government initiatives, but still political subdivisions, we want to seek those partnerships too. The board benefits multiple counties, including San Francisco and Aransas, so don't forget that when you're espousing these projects in your right, Judge Mills, this is a local area, but you're not going, you're going to benefit with me partner here together. And I can see that this would be a benefit to the General Land Office too, that they wouldn't have to choose one county over another that was equally as vulnerable, equally as affected, but they could choose a regional approach. And that's really what I wanted to reiterate with all of you today. As far as the emergency services that will or will not be considered eligible activities, we've had this discussion, but I really believe that in our last mitigation hearing, that we had said that fire stations would be included and they are because there was definitely some misunderstanding, but they are. Okay, that helps. I can now eliminate that email from the inbox and I appreciate that because again, we seek as a county to partner with our cities to find ways that we can be helpful to one another. So with that, let me just say that we welcome you back to the coastal bend and we look forward to these extensive partnerships, but make no mistake, those of us that are lucky enough to have had the plans, we're going to be in a huge advantage and I'm worried about my friends, I'm worried about us regionally, and so I'm going to really reiterate that we need to partner because if you don't have a plan, you shouldn't be punished that you don't have a project to advance within that plan. That's a tremendous concern for me. Lastly, and certainly this is probably our number one priority in Nuances County, that is if you're going to talk about studies, we're going to put a lot of is, if you're going to talk about studies, we're going to put a lot of eggs in a drainage study, but this drainage study does not know borders, and certainly doesn't know county boundaries. And I think when we're looking at drainage studies, you really ought to consider the basins, and so whether it's Nuaces or West Street or Goddard or San Antonio, here's one straight, when you talk about flooding, and you talk about mitigation and flooding, you have to, I want the GLO to remember that our basins are not connected. So for instance, I would love nothing more to partner with the Aransas, but they're not in the same basin. Now, that's unfortunate. So there's going to be a situation where, again, I don't want to see Aransas get punished, I don't want to see Nuaces get punished, because our basins are not connected, that we would have been perfect partners, but we're not going to be because of the way the hydrology works. So having said that, I think that you will see Nuaces put forward those activities that are already been identified in our hazard mitigation plan, then the updated one that will be presented together, and those projects will be in the coastal resiliency plan through Coastal Parks, already part of our overall master plan. And then again, where we can, we'd like to reach up into our basin partners and put forth a very strong, not cheap, very, because none of these projects are economical projects when it comes to drainage and flooding. I think you're guiding us there, but I'm certainly looking for some input, that's what I see. But I am concerned that our partners up the coast, might be by a pro-flies 20, 30 miles, are not going to be a natural alliance for us in this regard. And so that, I want the GLO to really consider that, because I know that when we look to spreading well, you're going to be looking for those projects where we can align. We cannot align where the basins are not connected. And I suppose, I'm speaking to the choir, but I just want to point that out for the record, and to also my partners here in San Padre, and so I don't know what we're going to do about that, but we would look for guidance from you all on how we can partner when we don't share basins. So with that, thanks again, and I'm looking forward to working with you regionally, as always.
Thank you, Judge, for your public comment. Up next, we have Councilmember Ann Nyberg from Ingleside on the Bay.
Good morning to everyone on such a beautiful day in the coastal bend. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak. My name is Ann Nyberg, and I'm a newly elected councilperson from Ingleside on the Bay, most commonly known as IOB. I also spoke back at the hearing in October in Corpus Christi. I appreciate the 300-page document and the information it contains to help us manage coastal resources for the resiliency of IOB. It is refreshing to know that my words were heard, even though I come from a small community. It assures me that our democratic process is alive and working. I am also impressed with how quickly you have worked through all the comments and had your report finished in such a timely fashion. I like your eight specific issues of concern, with several of those certainly impacting our community of IOB. Figure 2-73 on page 159 gives an informative approach to the multiple lines of defense. We will certainly use this document in the days to come as we continue to read and understand this lengthy document. We are a small community with limited paid staff. In fact, our staff are all part-time and those shared with other communities. Henceforth, a lot of the work to maintain our city is through volunteers. Why, just the other day, City Councilperson Susie Wilder, another resident and myself, cleaned up a pile of debris that was left after Harvey. Our concern was that the pile was growing instead of being removed. That is just one example of projects from Harvey that still have not been fixed, including our street signs. Each of these projects is waiting for volunteers who have the time and the health, since our community has a large population of elderly, to accomplish the tasks of our city. Now, do not get me wrong, we are a proud community and not afraid to jump in and help out our neighbors and city. We have groups working on abandoned dogs and helping with yard work for those who can physically or financially do it themselves. These are small projects that do not require large amounts of capital. However, for those projects that are necessary for making us resilient from flooding, drainage, storm impact, bay shoreline erosion, abandoned or derelict vessels or structures, and debris are very expensive and cost prohibitive for a community that gets most of their operating budget from property taxes. As a city council, we are being diligent with our budget, so to have the resources for unexpected events. To summarize, we need some of this HUD money to be a thriving, resilient community along the coastal bend, to support and give a safe, quiet place for people to live and work who work in the many industries in our area. Please keep us in the communication line, so we can continue to access the resources that are out there to help a small community like IOB. I'm just a small school teacher, just a retired school teacher, who moved to IOB to be close to family and get away from the hectic DFW lifestyle. In the process, I fell in love with my community and fell in passion to get involved and help my city. My calling for teaching lasted 40 years, and now my calling for public service, and now my calling is to help the service, with my learning curve being fast and furious. Please remember IOB and our needs as you allocate the generous amount of money that the great state of Texas has received. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment, Councilwoman. Up next, we have Councilmember Randy Kane from the city of Ingleside on the Bay. On deck, we have Catherine Mastin, the Chair of the IOB Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, good morning. I heard what you said at the beginning about questions. Mainly what I have are questions, so at the end, I'll just leave this with you, but I think I wanted just to say a couple of things. I'm also board member at the Ingleside Beach Club, and we're a nonprofit, and I'm wondering, because we didn't apply, is there an opportunity for revisiting the FEMA AGM GP supplemental, so that those who aren't quite on the list yet, because we're constantly being flooded, might get looked at? So that's one of the first questions on here. And I guess the only other thing that I really want to bring up is that my main concern is that the city by IOB is treated fairly, and I appreciate all of the structure that's been put into this. But I think that it might be beneficial to everyone if there was a little bit more focused on oversight for the COG mods, and because there's not a lot of documentation in here about what might go on with those mods, that there be a little bit more put into that. For example, maybe that the way that the COGS make their notifications of their public comment period be fleshed out and made a little bit more robust, like a more direct communication with the COG representatives, and perhaps extending the period that the public comment goes on to 30 days, since we're a little bit more informal than that. I guess that's the main thing, and I'll just leave this with you, and thank you for the time.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have Catherine Mastin, the Chair of the IOB Planning and Zoning Commission. On deck, we have John P. Jackson.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Catherine, Dr. Catherine Mastin, Chair of the Ingleside on the Bay Planning and Zoning Commission. It's great to see the variety of the project opportunities in the action plan, including the resilient communities program. However, as has been expressed, I'm also concerned about project applications from IOB potentially being a disadvantage in the scoring competition for these reasons. Number one, our city government is made up of volunteers, not dedicated paid urban planners, so this is new for us. Two, our proposals are likely to be for smaller amounts due to our community's size and rural location, although we'll be open to partnering, I'm sure of so. And then coastal communities are small, are cost more to live in inherently, so our population does not meet the LMI thresholds, but we're not wealthy, we're working class. And the plan emphasizes only natural hazards, I know those are the top two hazard priorities, but our 60-year-old waterfront community of about 700 residents faces natural risks from flooding and storms that are exacerbated by these rapidly increasing man-made hazards, and putting our location on two ship channels that are being deepened, increasing size and frequency of ship traffics, and wakes that cause coastal erosion, tank farms that are vulnerable to lightning strikes, and oil and gas pipelines all around us. So I have some questions and suggestions, and I know you can't answer, or maybe you can, but when will this statewide database and mapping and modeling tools be made available to us, and how will this be communicated? And I appreciate the addition of the resiliency, the mitigation resiliency measures to the scoring number for Hurricane Harvey Plan, the total point count on page 222 in the document is now 105 points, I didn't know if that was intentional, that maybe it should be 900 points. And then going on with that scoring number, there were 20 points for the LMI score on page 222, and I wondered if that was an all or nothing, like you're either meet the LMI or you don't. That's 20 points out of 105 as it sits right now. And on page 264, it states, under the national objective part, that all funded projects must meet a national objective for either, number one, urgent need mitigation, the UNM criterion, or the LMI criterion for benefiting the LMI, low to moderate income persons. So if that's the case, if I'm understanding that part of the project plan, I would suggest that the 20 points currently being proposed only for LMI, that that be changed to be either for LMI or UNM. And the statement, that would mean that the statement on page 264, that all programs and projects will have an LMI priority, that that statement could be eliminated. And I also wondered if the requirement, if it was a requirement from HUD that at least 50% of all the funds will be used to support activities that benefit LMI persons, if not, that might be adjusted as well or eliminated. And then I was also concerned on the scoring record about the tiebreaker being poverty rate. When it comes to mitigation, as I think you're hearing, you know, the emphasis should be more on the problem at hand, you know, what we're dealing with down here in the coastal bend, or the level of need, or the likelihood of project success, and these are often very different and not related to poverty. And another question in the scoring record is are the scores for project impact all or nothing, you know, and what per-person costs and percentages should be aimed for? We don't have the, you know, sense of that, what would make us competitive. So my hope is that GLO will find ways to ensure that small rural coastal communities like IOB can compete on a level playing field for CDGMIT funds by removing the irrelevant criteria, maybe offering bonus points for innovative responses to mitigation challenges that are arrived at in partnership with universities and industries, or demonstrating how a community can lift people up out of poverty by offering safe and affordable housing near coastal industries. So communities like IOB serve as desirable residential areas within commuting distance for a growing workforce to support the oil and gas industry, for example. Having a good pay job offers a direct pathway out of poverty. However, when communities like ours are threatened by hazards, both natural and man-made, property values come, without mitigation, we run the risk of becoming more like the open ghettos that HUD is trying to stomp out, and in some cases coastal communities will be decimated or just disappear. These CDGMIT grant funds provide a tremendous opportunity to innovate and implement ways to ensure that the Texas coastline continues to offer vibrant, resilient places to live and work for many years to come. Thank you for the work you've put into this plan. We look forward to meeting Captain Lundy as developments occur. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have John P. Jackson, and please make sure if anybody has any public comments that they would like to make. I don't have as many up here as I would like, so if you guys want to fill one out and get one to one of our staff members, that'd be wonderful. Sir, go ahead.
Thank you. As you said, I'm John P. Jackson, I represent a multi-generational family and business here in Aransas County, currently also involved in the establishment of an economic development corporation, and hopefully will join our regional partners in that endeavor. As you know, Aransas County was directly in the eye of Hurricane Harvey, and created considerable damage to homes, businesses, and public infrastructure here in Aransas County. No doubt about that. I've been for all of my life and personal experience with five hurricanes, but none of them matched Harvey in magnitude and damage. My family, actually, came here in the 1800s, lived through the historic 1919 storm that effectively wiped this community off the face of the earth. But Harvey's impact was much larger financially, and consequently, this community was severely set back. But after this storm, we were so fortunate to have a well-prepared and efficient long-term recovery plan, which well documented what needs to be done to return Aransas County to its pre-hurricane status. It is my understanding, though, that a significant portion of our recovery plan may not take place due to lack of funding, which may be diluted and spread out to other coastal areas up and down the state, which were not nearly as severely impacted as Aransas County. As of present time, our community is working well together like never before to get behind our recovery plan with the establishment of an economic development corporation, which will hopefully bring together public and private funding to fully execute on this plan. We've been waiting for two and a half years to receive our proportional share, which we strongly believe should be allocated where needed most, and the path is found most negatively impacted by Hurricane Harvey. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have Patrick Ny, the President of the IOB Coastal Watch Association. On deck, we have Shawna Breder, a business owner.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you again. I was in Corpus Christi here about a month ago, and thank you all. I'm here to represent myself and my wife, Julie DePeng, which is as well as Ingleside on the Bay Coastal Watch Association Forum this year, and we were formed so we can study what's going to happen to our community. As President, we have several executive officers here and other people that are in the organization, and I just wanted to let you know that we are looking forward to working with you all, so that you can support our projects going forward. As we all know, all of our communities in this beautiful area here was devastated by Harvey, and not unlike these other communities, we were without power, without sewer, without utilities and so forth, but with the aid of our city council and Mayor Amen and others that stepped forward with the HUD, let's see, we had FEMA, and AEP came, with all the different people around the country that came and put our infrastructure back together. That was a critical point in our lives, but the most vivid memories to me were how neighbors helped neighbors. We have a resilient heart, and we want to continue to do this, and we want to work together to come up with a plan that we can mitigate our lives going forward. Dr. Philippe Tussaud, he's with the Conrad Blutcher Institute, he's an associate research professor at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. His study, he does studies on sea level rise around the world. He says Ingleside on the Bay is leaking about a third of an inch per year now, and that's without any kind of glaciation melt in Antarctica or Greenland, and within five years, those numbers could change, and we could have a global catastrophe and precipitous a local. What I want to make a point, though, is that he says that nuisance flooding, these king tides, as they're calling it, the seasonal tides we had just this October 19, were 2.08 feet at the Lady Lexington. The tide gauge at Naval Station Ingleside, which is now Mota, was knocked out by a vessel and has not been in place, so what we don't know is really what happened there in Ingleside, but we had substantial flooding. And this flooding is going to continue. The nuisance flooding is not like the linear projection of whether sea level is going to rise, it's going to be logarithmic. He states that in 2000, let's see if I get my numbers here, let's see, in 2035, right now, it's an 8% chance of getting a three-foot tide. Three-foot tide would knock out most of our infrastructure down in the lower areas of Ingleside Bay, probably North Beach as well, but by 35, there's a 20% chance of having a three-foot tide. It's one every five years. It's one every five years. By twenty-fifty-eight, it's a fifty-fifty chance. So every other year we'll have a three or four-foot tide. If you put a tropical storm hurricane in the Gulf, what happens to our tides then? Of course, they get much bigger. But Ingleside is unique, we have pampers, we have these production, big production LNG ships, we have, you know, the port getting deeper. That displacement alone, we're seeing six inches on top of these flood stages, we're getting flooding every year, and it's going to get worse. We have to address these issues. So, having grown up in Ingleside the last fifty-two years, last thirty-seven of the geologists, I've been watching this stuff, it's imperceptible coming up, we can see these tides coming up, and I think the data overwhelmingly supports that we need to make a change, at least in Ingleside on the Bay, and I'm sure in all coastal communities along the Gulf Coast. What we are taking this knowledge firsthand, and what we have done, is we've hired a wonderful engineer for Mark McDonald, Stephanie here, I think she said she's interviewed her, thank Stephanie for being here with us. They are contracted to do a sea level mitigation study for our area, from not only Ingleside on the Bay, but all the way around the Cove area. They recently put a draft together for the La Quinta Ship Channel deepening and widening, and so they wrote the book on this area, they know what the effects are going to be, they know what the tides and the storm surge and the flood, the nuisance flooding is going to happen. So we have hired them, contracted them, and we are going to have a plan by February first for you to look at. These plans will include different conceptual designs, potential costs, and so forth, and so we're working forward to make this plan going forward. So, you know, I think there's some great questions that Catherine put forward, and Randy, about the two-hundred, three-hundred-page document, I didn't read it all, but I know that it was well-written, because I saw some of the summaries of it. And I just want to say that, you know, I guess the question is, how does a small community like ours fit into the scoring categories? I don't know how that would work. And how do we fall into the category that we have seasonal flooding, we have yearly flooding, you know, how does that work? I mean, we are going to have these tropical storms and hurricanes, but how does our community work in that type of point system? Thank y'all, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have Hannah Miller, Executive Director of the Rockport Cultural Arts District. This is my last card, therefore, if anybody would like to fill one out, oh yes, Keith, you'll follow right after. If anyone would like to fill one out, make sure to get it filled out and get it up to Seaman A or Shannon up there in front, or one of our staff members up here.
Thank you, I was at your last mitigation meeting in October and learned quite a bit, so, but like, it's really cool that you'll come to our small community and offer to do this here. I'm here as the Executive Director of the Rockport Cultural Arts District, I'm a fourth generation, and I also own a small business here in town. I would just like to make a comment about looking forward, you say this is a looking forward plan, so I ask that you look at the unique relationships between local government, our property owners, and our business owners. As someone in the cultural arts district, I see a lot of our business owners having to close out or struggle because they weren't eligible for funding, because they weren't the property owner. And so just being able to communicate, disseminate this information to them in a way that's understandable for what functions they're enabled to partner with, whether that's through our local government, whether it's through them partnering together, putting something together, but just making it easy to understand, easy to disseminate, and easy for them to apply for these projects, because a lot of them confuse mitigation funding for flood proofing or hurricane proofing, and those would be great uses of funding for these small businesses in the low-line areas.
Thank you for your public comment.
Onions Keith Bear, I'd like to make my public comment on a couple of items. You know, we've talked about the personal hardships that this flooding and things bring, but the bottom line is we need to get this money rolling towards the coast for hard projects. And what I mean by that is, we have to pour concrete, we have to bring in stone and steel to hold back these waters. And as, if any of you've done any marine-related projects, you know that is very expensive. But it's going to take projects like that to harden our coast against future onslaughts of tropical activity. We've seen the evidence of what happens. This very building that you were in was wiped out by Hurricane Harvey. All the sand and land around you was gone because of Hurricane Harvey. The water does not care what demographic or what your social status is, it will wipe out anything. But what I will say is, I'm a little concerned with the LMI issue. The reason is, if you think about the coastal region, all of us in this room, we live in a coastal community, it's not cheap to live here. We're not going to be able to adhere to a lot of these LMI issues. If you think about anywhere along the coast, whether you're on a river, lake, stream, bay, or Gulf of Mexico, that is some of the most expensive land in our state. So right there, it puts us out of a lot of these mitigation funds that we're going to need to harden our coast for future events. That's what we're talking about, hardening our coast for future events. We can't do anything about Harvey, Celia, Beulah, Allen, or any of the hurricanes that we had in the past, we're talking about the future. And so we can sit around and wait until the next hurricane season and the next disaster hits our coast, or we can get this money on the street and start building projects. Me here in Aransas County, the judge, the navigation district, and others like us, we have shovel-ready projects, if you show up with a dump truck full of money, I can build some stuff. We are ready. Both what we're posturing, we're trying to get ourselves in position, and we're trying to qualify, we're using so much of our time, our sweat equity, trying to get ourselves qualified, that what's not happening is the hard projects that we need to put on the ground. Breakwaters. For example, the lady that was just speaking, Hannah, in the downtown historical district, those breakwaters will protect those. What's going to lie behind those breakwaters is the new courthouse, the new city hall, the fire department, the police department, the EOC, all of that lies behind those protective breakwaters. And if we don't get these things ready for the next event, then shame on us, we didn't, we have our time to prepare, but we have to get the money rolling quick enough that we can help save ourselves, and that's what we're trying to do by making these applications. Other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have Aransas County Commissioner Charles Smith. On deck, we have Rockport Mayor Pat Rios.
Well, I'd like to reflect on the sentiments the men have spoken to me. We're sitting here twenty-seven months after the storm, and we foresee no money from any of the GLA's budgets, no. And this is, we've gone through two subsequent hurricane seasons that's all about hazard mitigation and protection of the harbor, but we've already wasted, in my estimation, two years. And in the second, I guess we're probably six to nine months from here from receiving any funds, so that'd be three to three and a half years. So the timing of this is a huge factor for me, and our business community could be using a big shot in the harbor from a construction project that we could get underway today.
Thank you for your public comment. Up next, we have Rockport Mayor Pat Rios.
Well, thank you, I want to thank the committee for coming, I'm very appreciative of the public turnout, and what I'd like to do on the state of Rockport is just assure everyone here that we've been working since way before the storm in the Aransas County Resiliency Initiative meeting, working on projects, identifying projects, it's been going on for years prior to Harvey getting this. We've stepped up that effort, I agree with Judge Gonzalez and Judge Mills about our regional approach, because we look at this as we're all in the same boat, and that look that tide could arise all ships, so we look at this opportunity to partner with our community, but we realize that we just can't work as individuals, we have to work together. And we, right now, are looking to team with GLA and accomplish our goals, we know what they are, we know without doubt, projects all over the community, and we just want to let you know that city Rockport, along with our partners, are ready to answer any questions, we'll afford anything that you want me to help us to afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That was the last public comment card that I had received, I'll give it a moment if anybody else would like to fill out a public comment card. Marry, you want to go in there? Go ahead. We'll get tomorrow.
Thank you, Keith, I'll fill out a card as soon as I'm finished. I just want to send a message back to Commissioner Bush, thanking him for allowing y'all, dispatching y'all to come to this coastal region. I know that y'all have a busy schedule to wrap up the year, God bless y'all, but most importantly, thank y'all for taking the time to come, and let him know that we do appreciate the very simple fact that he is recognizing not only the problems along the coastal area, but most importantly, the great state of Texas. So thank you very much for being here and taking the time. Safe travels back to Austin.
Thank you for your public comment. With that, I see no movement for further public comment cards to be picked up and filled out. Therefore, as indicated at the beginning of this hearing, once we reach the end of our public comment period and all of our public input, we will conclude even if it's prior to two PM. So we wanted to make sure to thank everybody for being here, thank you for taking the time on the Monday right after Thanksgiving holiday to be here with us to listen to the presentation about the programs and projects that may be eligible for Aransas County and other coastal bend entities. We hope that we hear from y'all, thank y'all for the public input you provided, and just like Heather indicated before, if there are things that you do think of in the future that you would like to provide public comment on, any concerns, any questions, any comments, we do welcome them at our email at cdr@recovery.texas spelled out dot G O B. And we will hang around for a little bit, we do have our next engagement coming up with Babe Aransas Ribbon Cutting. So, thank y'all so much for being here, God bless.